Now, excuse me, now we will convene the Mesa City Council's study session for June 27th. All members of our council are present. Item one is to review the agenda we have for our July 1st regular city council meeting. Counsel, any questions that you know of before we get started? I'll note that Mr. Brady is absent, but we have the capable Mr. Butler here. Mr. Butler, any staff presentations you'd like to make regarding Monday's meeting?
No, Mayor, we, the staff is ready to answer any questions that council may have, though.
Thank you very much. Ms. Duff?
I do have a couple items, just more, have a mini presentation on, just for public information and so a little discussion. One is on the large water users. It's number, got to bookmark it.
5C.
5C?
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, Counsel, good morning. So we're here to revise, update, an existing ordinance we have for large water users. These are very large water users in, more or less in Southeast Mesa, but this applies to the entire city. So giving you a little bit of background, let's talk about the existing ordinance. It was passed by council about five years ago, and it's focused on, as I mentioned, very large water users. This would be in the tens, more likely hundreds of thousands of gallons per day type of users, so big facilities. The intent of the ordinance really is to limit how much water actually comes from the city of Mesa's portfolio, our portfolio. So we want to set a cap on that, which we did with the current ordinance. And then anything above and beyond that, we're asking that developer to go out and secure long-term storage credits. They have to purchase them. They deed them over to us, so it would be separate from our portfolio, and we would pump that water, and then we would serve that to them, above and beyond the water that comes from our portfolio. So the threshold in the current ordinance is 550 acre-feet per year. And to give you a little bit of perspective, that's around half a million gallons per day, so that really is a big user. Again, any development that wants to use more than that, they have to purchase the long-term storage credits and then give those to us, as I mentioned. Some of the things we've experienced, since we passed that ordinance, we've had a severe drop-off in large water users that are interested in coming to Mesa. At the time we did the ordinance, we had a pretty significant queue of developers that were expressing interest in coming to Mesa, that were very large water users. That dropped off quite a bit, and then since we passed the ordinance, in fact, we've only had to create an MLM, well, we call it an MLM customer, stands for multiple large meters. There's only one customer since we passed the ordinance. That was even better than we expected, though, because instead of limiting them at 550 acre-feet per year and then bringing water to the table, they actually said, "We want to go above and beyond that and demonstrate our commitment to conservation and recognizing the drought." They actually brought every drop of water they're using to the table, so they're not using any water from our portfolio. So credit to them for doing that. Now, in terms of what we want to do with this ordinance revision, we want to build on the successes we've had with the current ordinance, and we want to lower that. So we had numerous discussions at all levels of staff, also with elected officials. We looked at data extensively, and we felt that lowering this threshold for future customers by 40% would be a step in the right direction, so that's what we're proposing with this revision. I can say at the current time, we still have, we have zero customers that even meet this lower threshold that are interested right now, that we know of. We also want to include any customer with a four-inch or larger meter in this, because there's the potential for using quite a bit of water. It doesn't mean they have to go and secure water supplies if they're not going to use more than the threshold that we're setting, a 330 acre-feet per year, but it's just, we want to recognize that there's a potential there, so they would become a customer, just with no obligation unless they decided to use more water to go get long-term storage credits. We also wanted to change the model of this ordinance, so instead of a development agreement and then the developer coming to council, getting council approval to be a large water user, we just want to set very carefully in the code all the requirements, have the customer meet those requirements, and then we would handle it like we have some other programs, like our industrial pretreatment program, where we would permit them, so it would be handled through a permit process, and that's how they'd be documented as an MLM customer. By lowering the threshold, there's a handful of customers, less than a dozen customers, that were here before we did the original ordinance. They already came to Mesa, they made that investment, they have whatever jobs here, they have an operation that is already up and running. They're using more than the 330, and a couple are using even more than the 550. They've been here a long time. We had to figure out how we make them compliant, so we're using this ordinance revision to make sure that they're compliant with the new ordinance. So that was the other side of that, there were a couple objectives here. So to recap, those two objectives are to lower the cap that a customer could take from our portfolio for future customers, and then to make sure that we make compliant any customers that were in this middle zone, so that they could be permitted and we could recognize that. I think I've covered all the bullets, so I think this would be a good time to take any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Ms. Duff?
So when you talk about existing customers, you know, before we even did our initial ordinance in 2019, those, you say make them compliant, which is getting a permit, and is there anything else, just having the awareness, because they were in place before we made the ordinance, so it's, I assume, kind of grandfathered? What does it mean in compliance?
Okay, that's a good question, Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So we want to recognize that they made an investment, they're using a level of water that although it may exceed that threshold, that we want to, we want to have an understanding with the permit, that, okay, we recognize that you've been here a long time, you made that investment, we're not asking you to demolish half your building or something extreme. We're saying that if you use more water, you have to understand that then you have to go, like any other future customer, go and secure long-term storage credits, but at present day, we're going to cap you at or around the water level you're using right now.
Okay, 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 and that's from our port, for our portfolio, I can see the word.
Right, it's a very small number of customers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just a few.
So Chris, give us an example. So let's just say our largest water customer is using 900 acre-feet of water per year. I'm just using a round number. So if they were going to, that's where they're capped at, and so if they were going to go above that, then they would have to get the long-term storage credits to go beyond that?
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman, so for your example, we have a specific category of a legacy customer that if they use, I think it's at or around nine, I'm not quoting exactly, at or around 900 acre-feet, they will be capped at 950 acre-feet. Anything above and beyond that, they would have to comply and go get long-term storage credits. There's only one customer that fits that category.
Yeah, so we're not hindering their expansion if they want. I mean, they can still grow and develop if they so choose, they just have to go buy the water out on the market.
And that's the message that we're giving. We're not limiting anyone to grow their development to any size with respect to water usage. We're saying that we have to be careful and manage carefully our water supplies, so we're setting a ceiling from our water supplies that could be made available to any customer. Above and beyond that, you have to work with us, you have to get your own water, and then that's the water that you would use above and beyond the cap.
Okay. Do we have a customer today that buys all their water, and then we just provide the water for them, treat it, and sell it to them?
Correct, we do. So after we did the original ordinance, we had a large customer come in, and because they're not like a legacy customer, they're a new customer, and the ordinance was in place, they had to comply with the 550 acre-foot ceiling from us, but they chose, that's the example I gave earlier, they chose, listen, we're going to be such a good steward, we're not even going to take one drop of water from Mesa's portfolio, we're going to bring all the water to the table.
Okay, good.
So that's, I think that's one of the biggest successes I see from even the original ordinance, is it's just changed the attitude of the development community and how they look at water, particularly in Mesa, and I think it's either done two things, it's either steered away really large water users that maybe were coming to Mesa and made them look elsewhere, or it's even taken at least a couple customers, actually more than that, that do want to come to Mesa, but they've actually re-engineered their whole HVAC system to get away from water-cooled, to where they're actually, if you look at their footprint, they're using very little water, at all.
So just to finish up, so we have customers today that will be grandfathered or capped at what they're using today, and then they will be able to have to buy water in the future if they want to expand. So we're, again, we're not hindering anything of their economic growth in our community. And then, so we're just lowering the threshold, if you're a new customer, then you come into 330 acre-feet you're capped at, and if you want to go above that, then you have to buy some water.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Mr. Summers?
Is it addressing some of the rates? I think in the past, we've given some pretty preferable rates for water for some of our large customers. How have we been progressing with that? Is this in here, or are we going to talk about that later?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Summers, that's a great question. So this is separate and apart from rates, it's strictly looking at water usage, but as you asked a question about rates, the way Mesa works is, we're different than other cities, where we handle the budget process without rates as part of that discussion, so we just, as you know, concluded the budget process for next fiscal year, and then that's annually when we start, we start actually a lot earlier, but when we get into really looking at numbers and putting together rate scenarios, that we vet through the city processes, and then as the summer progresses, then we start having those discussions with council. The last couple of years, just, I think, to your point about this nature of customer, we've really been in a catch-up mode the last two to three years, trying to make sure that any increased costs, that burden is not borne more heavily by the residential customer. So we've been in a transition over the last two to three years, putting heavier burdens each year on commercial, and I think you'll find when we come to you this, later this summer, we're going to continue that trend of proposing or suggesting to you for consideration more strict and, I think, more burdensome rate increases on those big water users and commercial in general.
You hit the nail on the head there when you're talking to the people that are living here, are understandably a little concerned about, hey, I pay one rate, and this large water user who's dumping into processes is using it and getting a sweetheart deal from the city. And, you know, rates very much have a lot to do with incentivizing alternative sources of cooling, like you mentioned, just to use one example. So switching to HVAC units instead of water-cooled, well, if your rates are higher, that's another incentive for you to find other ways to cool your system, and we so happen to be, pretty soon, going to be home to one of a new technology company, come to Phoenix-Mesa Gateway Airport that does this very kind of work. So it's not like it's very far away where that is. But there, I also want to talk a little bit about a balance, too, because water is important to advanced manufacturing processes, right? So how are we balancing the water use and the rates with economic development and attracting businesses? And particularly, manufacturing businesses that provide a lot of jobs. Water's a commodity like anything else, and if we're going to think of it in terms of dollars, per se, then I want to spend my dollar where it gets the greatest bang for the buck for the community. So how are we, you know, and it's a balance, right? I don't want to provide too much water to storage closets, but I do want to provide water to businesses that are going to provide our residents with high-paying jobs. So how do we balance that, Mr. Butler?
Certainly, I think, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, when we get into the rate discussion coming up, I know that's something that Chris and his team are very cognizant of, looking at the market and trying to make those balances to make sure that we are competitive, but at the same time, making sure that every class of users taking their fair share and their rightful share of that. So duly noted, and we'll continue to look at that.
It's a difficult project, and I was, or problem, and I'm not looking for the answer today, but it's just something I want to put on everybody's radar, that it's, it's a water problem, but it's also, okay, we've had a lot of large water users look elsewhere. I hope those large water users were just simply data centers and not large, you know, hey, I want to bring in 1,200 manufacturing jobs. You know, unfortunately, we had a building like that, that was 1,200 manufacturing jobs, and it ended up a data center, and that happened a long time ago, and that was a pretty, they got a pretty good deal with their water rates, and that's something that we have to watch out for, too. What about, because it's not just the manufacturing buildings, but what about things like large landscape water users? Here's also a bit of a problem, right? We want to make sure that we have good landscaping in the area, but large swaths of turf that are watered with their, particularly our CAP side, right? How does this address those large water users and try to incentivize them to reduce that turf footprint and?
Councilmember Summers, so if it's a meter that is using potable water and it's exceeding those thresholds and it's identified by any provision in the ordinance, then they're complying the same. There's categories, we have three golf courses that use raw CAP water, so we're pulling raw water out of the CAP canal through a turnout, and then we have agreements with them, and they're taking the water. We've excluded raw water from this and really focused on potable water, because the real emphasis is looking at those very large commercial industrial customers, that especially was an issue a few years ago.
But we still take the raw CAP water and treat it to become potable water, so that's, do we not?
No, not for the golf courses, we don't. This is just...
Well, it's because of being used by golf courses.
So they're governed by the state, their state provisions. So, because we wanted to keep that separate and apart, because it's such a different animal from the intent of this ordinance. Like, for example, if we were to put a ceiling on those golf courses that use raw water, now they have to comply with the ordinance, they have to go get long-term storage credits, and now we're pumping groundwater. So one of our primary objectives as a utility is to get away from pumping groundwater, and now we're taking someone who's using a renewable raw surface water, and we're saying, now we want you to pump groundwater, so we're going in the opposite direction, so there's other ways.
So that's one, who's governing it at the state, regulating?
So, Councilmember Summers, the Department of Water Resources regulates large turf facilities under the groundwater code.
How well have they been able to police this?
Well, that's a question. We've talked about that.
I heard the giggles, so not well. I think this is something we should put on our radar, too, because that is a substantial amount of water being used. They also have a benefit to the community, at least according to visit Mesa. So, but we need to make sure that we're utilizing our water in the best resources. And then the last thing before we move on is...
Councilmember Summers, could I?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Add something, just a thought, too, in response to something you said a little bit ago, just, it's worth mentioning, I think, that the city of Phoenix, just this spring, also adopted a somewhat similar program. It's a little bit more complex, and there are more moving parts, but other parts of the Phoenix metro area have certainly gone in this direction.
For this or for?
For the sort of large water user concept, not for turf.
Well, if there is a best practice, it's always worth looking at, although simplicity tends to work best, in my opinion. And then the other concern I have is that we're seeing a lot of, back to the big industrial users, we're seeing a lot of, there's a lot of public outreach about the conservation that's going on with respect to water, and one of our large water users is very proud of that, they put on here that, "In the greater Phoenix area, home, it's a data center, they are working with Salt River Project to protect 30,000 acres of forest at severe risk of wildfire. With a 10-year plan to strategically thin forests in the Colorado River Basin, the project will help protect the watershed from being devastated by wildfires and ensure the upstream reservoir can continue to support local communities. Investment is the largest investment with SRP's Resilient Water and Forest Initiative is expected to deliver nearly $2 billion gallons of water benefits in the area." But SRP, can you explain to me, is SRP, who's actually serving the area that in Southeast Mesa?
Councilmember Summers, no. Southeast Mesa is served by the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, and that's a CAP.
Right. So explain that a little bit, CAP versus SRP water, what, there's a, Mesa's basically cut in half, correct?
Yeah, more or less. So the city zone where we sit is served by SRP, so around Val Vista West, the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which we co-own and operate with Phoenix, that surface water that comes from in-state Salt River system, that's the water that is used to furnish customers here. Once you get into East Mesa, especially Southeast Mesa, we actually have two plants, we have the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, and we have the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. And down in Southeast Mesa, that's served specifically by the Signal Butte Plant. So that's the CAP, which is Colorado River, which is part of the seven state, the seven basin states, right?
So in short, the, this is a great program, first of all, it's very, very well needed, and I appreciate that, but the benefits aren't going to fall into the side of the city, into that water portfolio.
It's worth, it might be worth mentioning, Councilmember Summers, we do have some water that comes from the Salt Verde system that can be used, but...
Okay, and we're looking at some other things, raising the dams, I understand that, so there will be future benefits, will get larger over time. I think with these, with these programs, and they're fantastic, having these large water users focus on the, would it be fair to say the watershed or the water area, that where they're drawing from, to try to improve the resilience and sustainability of the water in the area that they're using, would be something that I hope that staff and others will start to focus on and help them identify projects that can really help in these areas, because there's, we're in two very different water pictures as...
Well, Councilmember Summers, just that $2 billion gallons you mentioned, that water, if cities participate in that water and helping with the conservation programs, you're entitled to that water, so that water can go anywhere within the project. Is that correct, Bill?
I think that's a little tricky, Councilmember.
See?
Well, my board meetings on the other side said that that would be available to other municipalities, but not, but to belabor it, any municipality that wants to participate in these conservation projects can, and then they will have some entitlements to that water.
Yeah, well, if that's the case, and that would be fantastic way to address the issue, too, because we could, if we could draw that water off from west to east...
But that's only like 6,000 acre-feet, it's not that much.
No.
But still, it's our part of participating in conservation throughout the state of Arizona.
But as you heard, it gets tricky.
Well, I...
No pressure.
This is a great topic, but I'm going to suggest...
Let's just move on.
We might be a little bit off the agenda at this point. So, anything else on, responsive to the modifications to the major water user ordinance on Monday?
No, I don't think so, Mayor. It's pretty straightforward, the existing ordinance, I think, to sum up, has been successful. We wanted to build on the successes, look at where we could make improvements based on what we've learned, and that's why we're here today.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any other questions on this topic? Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Duff?
Also 5B, just a quick overview for the downtown area and events, so everybody is aware, a lot of people have been asking about this overlay, so it makes it much easier to hold events in the downtown area.
Morning, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, Counsel. The change to the zoning for the downtown events overlay area, so as an overview, several years ago, the city passed the downtown events overlay area. Before we had that overlay, you would be required to get a special use permit or some other type of special approval if you had an event that exceeded four days, four consecutive days per year, I'm sorry, four events per year, or four consecutive days in a row. By adding the overlay, we allowed more events to happen on individual parcels without the need for that special use permit. The intent was, is in the downtown area is where we want to have special events, is less impactful to the neighborhood, because there's less neighborhood issues, single-family neighborhoods. With the increased activity that we've seen in downtown, there has been some desire to see events go beyond that original downtown events overlay area. So we, the amendment to the code that you see today is an expansion of the overlay area itself to extend further to the east, but it also includes some new definitions for city-sponsored events that allow the city to hold our own events in downtown, with or without the need for a special use permit, because it exceeds four days. Now, really, the only event that that applies to right now is Mary Main Street, but we know how Mary Main Street functions, we know it doesn't, it isn't impactful, and we know it's a benefit to the community in general, so that's why we wanted to make it easier for it to function. That's my quick overview. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, I appreciate that, I don't have a lot of questions about it, but this should also, a special use permit, you know, that's a 60-day window, and so it's a long process, and a lot of businesses who want to do repetitive events, it becomes an issue, and so we take that away, and also take away that in the system, right? In the system of staff having to review certain permits, especially when they're recurrent, and so I appreciate the work on this and the simplicity that it brings to downtown. Thank you.
And the one thing I did note, that I should note, it does not take away the requirement still for a special event license, so there is still the opportunity for the city and staffs to review and make sure that the event's going to be operated properly and that they're good actors when they do have their events.
Thank you. Ms. Duff, anything else you wanted to talk about? Counsel, any other questions on Monday's agenda?
I'd just like to follow up on that. Apparently I had that off the whole time, you still heard me, that's disturbing. This is an interesting idea, I kind of like it, but is this something that we could take to other parts of the city in the future? I don't think there's any areas right now that this would apply, but can this be put in a zone, district, whatever, somewhere else?
So can events in other parts of the city not require...
Yeah, I mean, well, East Market is yet to be developed, just to use an example, right? So having these kind of events, downtown-style events over in Southeast Mesa is something that I know folks are interested in, could something like this be applied there, eventually?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, Counsel, this is definitely something we can look at in the future for other areas, so that we can try to encourage these events in different areas, like Eastmark, maybe Longbow, those types of areas, for sure.
Very interesting, thank you. Great. Counsel, let's go forth.
Yeah, I had a question on 5A. Mary, can you just kind of explain that real quick?
5A?
5A, because I think that affects parcel...
That's the one we were just talking about, right?
No, we were talking about 5B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. So, this is a little bit of a cleanup item, this text amendment. So in 2015, the city council actually adopted some text amendments that allowed banquets and conference centers in the light industrial and the planned employment park zoning districts, and at the time, they found that, they thought that these banquet and conference centers were really in appropriate use in the industrial districts because of the separation that they usually have from residential uses, and so having things such as wedding venues and those types of uses would be appropriate to be in some employment districts, because they really wouldn't have much impact on residential uses. What happened was, when we had the Quality Development Design Guidelines, and we had a big text amendment overhaul that was done in 2019, and when we did that text amendment, we updated the land use table for the employment districts and banquets and conference centers that was accidentally left out of the chart, so by de facto, it eliminated that as a permitted use. So what this text amendment does, would just re-establish those as permitted uses with the special use permit, which was done in 2015. That was the same process that was approved by city council in 2015. So just kind of reverting that back, doing a cleanup and reverting that back as an allowed use within LI and PEP districts.
Allowed use with a special use permit?
With a special use permit.
Okay, as opposed to a council use permit, which is required now?
Now it's not permitted at all.
It's not permitted at all?
Yes, restricted use.
Okay, okay, that's why they have to reset. Okay, thank you.
Great.
I had one more question about 3K and the ambulance, the transport services. I know we've had a presentation on this, but... but can you just remind me? This brings it to 30 in the fleet. Out of how many? How many are we still outsourcing?
Mayor, Councilmember go forth, members of the council. 30 will bring us up to the number that we need. So, and that once we... And that, as we build it out, as we continue to meet with city management on adding more units, this will give us the 70 we need to have a complete... The right number of ambulances to absolutely run the service completely.
Oh, okay. So, 70 is the total number. This will bring us to 30. Oh. So, are we... Are there any third-party transporting happening in Mesa still then?
We have... AMR at this time, AMR still has seven units in the system.
Seven?
Seven, right. And we have 15. And then, we will meet with city management on the next phase and when we add more, when we can staff more ambulances for our own.
Okay. Okay. So, the future numbers that we...
Yeah. And Mayor, Councilmember go forth, that has been a reaction to the private sector pullback in certain areas. So, we've tried to make sure that we've had adequate transport available whenever the need arises, as we've seen our private sector partners choose not to...
Service our...
Service certain areas of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, tell us about the demo ambulance and the procurement of the ambulances and the difficulty and how we're getting on.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, members of the council, that has been a problem. Normally, it takes about three years to get a vehicle. We had the opportunity here. There was one demo ambulance that's basically done. It's a little different than our normal specs, a little bit smaller, a different... A smaller air-conditioning unit. But the one we will be able to get in 30 days, and then the other six ambulances, we'll be able to get by the end of the year. So, they say December. If we add a couple months, since, say, February, that probably puts us in the ballpark. But so, they are slightly different in specs, but they checked out these units, and they still will serve a purpose for us and serve us well.
Okay. Yeah, because when I read the report, it said a demo ambulance. I didn't know what that meant.
Right. So, it's already manufactured.
It's ready to go.
Ready to go, and it'll be here in 30 days, that one.
Good. Thank you. Then we'll put it to use.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Monday? I'll note that at our last regular council meeting, I had asked Agenda Item 4A to be pooled, and now it's back on. This is the Visit Mesa DMA agreement. And I just want to compliment city staff and the folks from both organizations for getting together and working that out. I'm excited about the expanded partnership between those organizations, and I look forward to supporting that on Monday. So, thank you for the work that went into that. Also, relevant to Monday's agenda, I need to remove Item 3A. It's a contract that involves a company that I have a family member that works for, and so, I need to declare a conflict. So, we'll pull 3A from the agenda, and I will refrain from participating in that vote. All right. Moving on. Counsel, anything else about Monday night? Moving on, Item 2A is a presentation and to receive an update on the Rio East-Dobson Streetcar Extension. We've had some exciting news the last few days on this item.
Mayor Jody had to amend her presentation with the...
Oh, really? So, this was already on the agenda before we got there?
It was. It was.
Yes. So, good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jody Sorrell. I'm the Transit Services Director for the City of Mesa. And with me to my right is Trevor Collin. Trevor is the Chief Capital Development?
Chief of Capital Development.
Chief of Capital Development for Valley Metro. And he may look somewhat familiar. He's a former City of Mesa employee. He was the project manager for the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension. And we're here this morning to give you an update on the Rio East-Dobson Streetcar Extension. We've talked about it periodically during various budget presentations and stuff. But we're at a point where we can really talk a little bit more about what's going on with that project. And I'm going to kick it over to Trevor with some exciting news that happened this week.
Good morning, Mayor, council. And Mayor Giles, you alluded to this, but we were successful in hearing this week about a award of a RACE grant. This was... This is an extremely competitive grant program throughout the United States through the Department of Transportation. This year alone, there were over 1,000 applications, and about 138 were accepted. The RACE grant for Rio East-Dobson Streetcar Extension is one of two that were accepted in the state of Arizona. So, very strong partnership with, obviously, City of Mesa, City of Tempe for this, our federal partners. And in particular, I want to congratulate my capital grants team who took this bull by the horns and ran with it. And so, this is... Another key is that there's no local match with this grant, which is unique. That doesn't happen very often. And these funds will be used to advance the preliminary engineering and the environmental phases later on, leading this project forward.
Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you. This is our rail system map in a year from now. So, on a very cold December day in 2008, we opened a 20-mile light rail system. Since that time, thanks to two light rail expansions in Mesa, soon-to-be three expansions in the City of Phoenix and a new streetcar line, the 20 miles will have nearly doubled in a matter of 17 years. One area I want to point out will be a focus of discussion today is that green line, the streetcar line. So, what we're discussing today, obviously, is an extension of that streetcar line. This is my marketing speech, and I'll be done with it when I'm done with it. So, but we at Valley Metro, we exist to connect communities, enhance lives. And at the end of the day, what we sell is trips. That is our purpose, whatever division and department we're in. Last year, we served 34 million trips. That includes bus and rail, average 120,000 a day. In addition, and above that 34 million, we've provided a million paratransit trips for those that are qualified based on ADA status. About half of our trips are work or school-bound. In addition to that, half of our ridership has no other transportation option. Over the course, and I showed you that graph of how the system has grown and will soon be a two-line system, we've received a billion and a half in federal investment. And within a half mile of our rail corridors, we've seen 17 billion in neighboring economic development, half a billion of that alone in downtown Mesa. By 2050, we anticipate in the region an additional 2 million people moving here. And so, a balanced transportation plan is truly critical, and transit is part of that balanced plan.
So, how did we get here? Why are we here today? In 2017, 2018, we started two different studies through the Fiesta District area and in the West Mesa area in general to look at high-capacity transit. The biggest one we did was a feasibility study, streetcar study, with the City of Tempe and Valley Metro. And the map you see in front of you is the result of the corridors that rose to the top in that study. As you can see, two of the five corridors are in Mesa and make up this area... Make up the area that we're... Most of the area we're under study for. See if you can go to the next one. This slide, the resulting alignment that came out of that was the red line, which is the Rio East study. And then, the green line is future extensions that would happen through the Fiesta District. And I just want to point out that green line is consistent... In our 2040 Transit Master Plan, we had that... Those corridors identified for high-capacity transit, but a technology yet to be determined. Through the studies we did in 2018 and 2017, streetcar rose as the preferred technology. So, that was rolled over into our most current Transit Master Plan, the 2050 Transit Master Plan. So, it's all consistent in building, all the plans are building upon each other. And as a result of the two studies we did, we've taken very... Pretty deliberate steps to put ourselves in positions to be competitive for getting grants like the RACE grant and other grants. So, steps we've taken from the recommendations from those studies include extending Route 48 on Rio Salado from the Tempe Marketplace into Mesa Riverview to help develop, grow ridership in that corridor. In addition, the last two years, we've added service on University and Broadway to match service in Tempe, to, again, grow that ridership for those rail-bus connections that are very important, especially in Mesa with our light rail ridership to have. And then, we... One of the recommendations was to implement a neighborhood circulator in that area, which we did almost two years ago now, the Fiesta Buzz. And I'm really happy to say that's been fairly successful. We've grown, added 11,000 new transit trips to the Dobson Road corridor with that circulator. The Orange Box identifies land use and planning steps taken, which we've taken, and you'll hear more about in the next presentation for the Mesa Connected Plan, supports these next three bullet points. And I just want to point out, that was another federal grant we got to do that study. So, these corridors are very competitive in the federal region to get funding to support what we may want to do there.
Next, I'll give a kind of a quick overview of what streetcar is, what the high-capacity transit mode is. And we do get a question a lot. In fact, we've had public meetings this past month. What's the difference between streetcar and light rail? Certainly, there are some similarities. Both operate on overhead wire, same voltage. Both use the same rail type, rail gauge. They're both high-capacity transit modes. But there are some differences. So, the streetcar vehicle, as you see in that picture, it's slightly shorter than a light rail vehicle. It's about 67 feet, as opposed to 92 feet on our light rail vehicles. This streetcar operates in a single-car consist, as shown. If you look out City Hall, a lot of the time, you'll see that light rails typically run in either two- or three-car consists, meaning two or three light rail vehicles connected and operating in that manner. Streetcar can be operated in exclusive guideway, or it can operate in mixed-flow traffic. And it does currently in Tempe, whereas light rail does not. It operates primarily 99% in dedicated guideway throughout our system. Another interesting feature of our streetcar vehicles, I just told you they run off of overhead power, but our streetcars actually also run off of battery backup. So, there are portions of the streetcar alignment in Tempe that run on battery and don't require overhead wire. We can't do that for the whole alignment, but we can do that in certain zones where it makes sense. Our light rail vehicles do not have battery backup. They need the overhead power. So, what's the difference? It's still a high-capacity transit mode. It's frequent, but it's really built to serve those shorter-to-medium-distance trips, whereas our light rail system is connecting the downtown urban hubs currently of Mesa, Tempe, and Phoenix. The streetcar is also a great option, but it's for those shorter and medium-distance trips outside of that backbone of our system. Another thing, the last thing I'll say, is streetcars tend to stop a little more often than light rail, every quarter to half-mile, whereas light rail, you're looking at typically every half-to-mile. So, light rail would be that next higher sense, whereas the streetcar is that medium. So, we've shown you a lot of maps, and we're going to show you a little more. But really, to hone in on the study area, the Rio East-Dobson project that's currently being studied and presented through public meetings is shown in red. And for reference, the blue line is our existing light rail system. The green line is our existing three-mile streetcar system. The red line, Rio Dobson East, would be about a 4.4-mile expansion of streetcar further into Tempe and then into Mesa. About 60% of that would be located in Tempe and 40% in Mesa. In the coming slides, I'll do a closer look at the alignment with aerials. What's our purpose? You know, our purpose with this is to improve the mobility and accessibility within this area, provide a high-capacity transit option. I'm not going to read that list, but today, with even before we get there, there are many, many assets in this corridor, activity centers, education, that are large draws of people. And we believe, and we're really excited about this corridor. Also, it would create another connection for us to our light rail system down near Main and Dobson. So, we like to see that cross-mobility. Also, it would be a close connection there to the Sycamore Transit Center and bus service. Moving a little closer to the study need. On the left, these are projected numbers based on MAGS data by 2050. And this study area is anticipated to see a 55% increase in residents and a 45% increase in workers, meaning more people go to work. The number on the right is not a projection. The number on the right is the existing condition today, based on census data, that 79% of the study area has zero- or one-car households. We look at zero- and one-car households as an indicator of the viability of a corridor or an area for transit and the need. All right. So, I'm going to run through the alignment pretty briefly here in one-mile segments. But these next four slides are really to show you how the alignment is connected to various activity centers, both in Tempe and Mesa. We're going to start on the west end in Tempe, near our existing end-of-line. And you're going to see shaded areas, and I'll talk about some of those. But our existing end-of-line, just west of Rural Road on Rio Salado, is at Marina Heights, just north of ASU Sun Devil Stadium. Marina Heights is actually the largest office development in the history of the state. It is an earlier phase of multiple novice phases, which is a public-private partnership between ASU or led by ASU. So, that first mile, we work from the end-of-line, head over to McClintock East. Crossing into McClintock, we enter the area where Tempe Marketplace is located. Obviously, a lot of shopping opportunities. And then, we enter the Mesa boundaries just as we cross under the State Route 101, Arizona 101. Entering Mesa, we come upon Sloan Park. So, I don't need to explain what that is to you. But obviously, for transit, we love to serve special events as well as day-to-day users and all users. But the popularity of spring training in the valley, and of course, it's at Sloan Park with the Cubs, we'd be able to serve that. I should have shaded in the two hotels and convention center. We got to a point where we were going to shade the whole map. So, but we certainly could have there, but that's also a draw and a connection for us. Riverview Park, parks and recreation opportunities are important connections to our system as well. And then, on the northeast corner, we would serve Mesa Riverview Shopping Mall as well. So, north is now to the left. So, if you're trying to figure out what you're looking at. So, we do make a right turn south on Dobson Road with the alignment. We continue south across University. And then, we would connect in near Main Street and Dobson, the north end of the Asian District. And as I mentioned earlier, a strong connection to the light rail station there, the Transit Center, we have a parking right there. So, this would become essentially, for this phase of the project, the new end-of-line. And I failed to mention, but just as importantly, throughout these big features that you see, we also have neighborhoods and housing. And that's another great thing. We want those things to be near transit. Okay. So, over the past month, we've been doing community outreach. We held two in-person meetings, one in Mesa and then one in Tempe. And we had a total of 60 attendees and great feedback. We're also hosting a virtual open house that will end tomorrow. So far, or as of last week, we've had over 1,000 visitors. And 206 of those peoples have submitted surveys with their feedback. We've also held some meetings with some key stakeholders, including Sloan Park. Thank you, city staff for facilitating that meeting. Mesa Riverview, we've met with some neighborhood associations, and we'll continue to do so. We do have links to our public website, both the virtual open house and the project website. So, this is where we stand in the near-term future. We're still in the evaluating alternatives. So, what we're looking at is how will streetcar operate in the right of way? Is it mixed-flow? Is it in the middle? Is it side-running? We're also looking at potential station locations, and we're really taking that community feedback on what they feel makes sense as far as a good station location. Obviously, we can't stop every 100 feet, but we can stop pretty often. And we want to make sure that we're stopping in locations that make good sense, based on some of their feedback as well. And then, later this year, the next steps really are later this year to present to City Council here, City of Tempe Council, and our Valley Metro Board of Directors a locally-preferred alternative, which will really define this corridor and define the mode as streetcar. really define this corridor and define the mode as streetcar. With that...
Great. Thank you. Great presentation. Council, questions on this? So this was just a regularly-scheduled update.
Yes.
And it was just a lucky coincidence that we had this funding announcement a few days ago.
Happy coincidence.
That's great. Well, thank you, Ben. And I get, it's probably good to point out that Prop 479 really doesn't play a role in this, because Prop 479 does not include any funding for expansion of light rail and transit. Am I correct?
Correct. The Prop 479 sales tax does not, is any, the high-capacity transit projects are not included to be funded by the sales tax.
So the issues that we're talking about today are totally just not connected to Prop 479? I mean, well, in terms of direct funding for the expansion of light rail, on transportation generally, and...
Yes.
Yeah. There's, I'm sure there's complementary issues.
And Mayor, I would just add, one of the reasons, since we're out soliciting public comment right now, having public meetings, we wanted to make sure the council was fully briefed on where this project stands. But as staff just alluded to, we hope to be back before the end of the calendar year for that locally-preferred alignment. And that's a major milestone in the eyes of project development on this, once a city council designates that locally-preferred alignment. So that is where you solidify that it would be a streetcar route and not another mode of high-capacity transit. That would be streetcar, and then there's more technical information that goes in with that. So we're working vigorously, right, to try to get that back to council before the end of the year.
Great. Well, if you're soliciting comment, I'll say I am a big fan of the streetcar technology, even compared to light rail. I mean, the fact that it can go through lanes that are shared by vehicles, I think is, makes it more flexible, and the size and the flexibility of it, I think it's a great match. I love connecting to Tempe, all of the sites that you just, the shopping and the sports venues and everything. I think it's just a natural connection. Mason, Tempe ought to be more connected that way. And I like the alignment. I like, you know, coming down the Asian Corridor, going up to the Fiesta District, and then, I know, future expansions, ultimately getting back a long country club. I like everything about it. So that's one person's opinion. Ms. Spillsbury? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
So thank you for the presentation. I know there's some neighborhoods that are skeptical about it. They're not in favor of it. Have you reached out to the neighborhoods in West Mesa and had conversations with them?
We did have a meeting with the Mesa Grande neighborhood.
Okay.
And had that meeting, and we're continuing to reach out to different neighborhoods as we go through this.
Yeah, and maybe inform us on how this would be built, the monies for it, the timelines, if this were to go forward. And personally, if this were to go forward, I like mixed-flow. I think that's so that no traffic is impeded by, as the streetcar goes through, you can use that as a driving lane. But anyway, timelines, and how does this get built?
Well, I think...
I mean, you've got a grant here, obviously.
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I think the one thing to remember is, these projects are very long. They don't, it's not going to be built tomorrow.
You've told us that many times.
I'd just like to reiterate that, because sometimes members of the public think it's, you know, going to be done very quickly. We've been talking about this project for well over 10 years to get to this point. By the time we finish up the LPA process, I think we're looking at targeting somewhere being, if things keep falling into line. There's a lot of things we don't control, which impacts the schedule, such as FTA, FTA review, the budget cycle, that is out of our control, so we, that's what makes it so long. So I think we're looking at an opening for this, that would be sometime between 2032 and 2034. So it is a long process, just, and as we go through each stage, we will not only tighten up the budget, but tighten up the schedule, because we'll have a better feel. But right now, there's just so much stuff that's out of our control and so many balls in the air, that that's generally the schedule.
So is this aligned with federal dollars to be built? Is that what you're saying? And then the operation and maintenance is the responsibility of whom?
We will, we will go for, we will apply for a FTA capital improvement grant to build this project. And then there'll be some local money most likely be involved to help fund part of it before we get to the operations and maintenance, which would be sometime in that 2032, 2034.
And the O&amp;M is, that cost is buried by whom?
The cities.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we have, okay, never, that's future costs.
Yeah.
And I will point out, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that even though Prop 479 doesn't include money for rail capital, it does include rail state of good repair within that tax. So there are, if that tax should pass, there will be a county tax that could supplement rail state of good repair, and you're talking, you know, some O&amp;M there that's included in that tax. Just no, no new rail extensions with the tax.
Julie, and then Frankie.
Well, so yeah, that was kind of my question. The community outreach and input that we're seeking is not whether to do this or not. It would be more of where to put the stations and how to do it, then, because I also have seen a lot of negativity around this, from West Mesa mostly. So that, it's, this is like, decided already that we're doing it? Or like, how does that work?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, I think part of this, of course, is that we've tried to look at this holistically. I know, you know, on social media and other platforms, that there can be a lot of negativity. I think staff's actually received a lot of positive input from their public outreach, and, you know, and we all know in government, sometimes the, you know, there can be very vocal folks, but that's why, over the course of many years, going back to, what, 2017, you said, Jody, that the city council, various member, consistencies of the city council have, you know, made the decision that a high-capacity transit option in West Mesa would be needed. And that's why this study, validating the growth, the expected residential and job growth in West Mesa, the capacity constraints that our road network may see in the future as we look out to 2050, has been taken into consideration. But certainly, getting that support and input from the public's been a key to what Valley Metro and the city's tried to do over those years, and will continue to do. As Jody mentioned, this is a marathon, and with many years, and a lot of public discussion and discourse to go over, over the course of those years.
Before Frankie, I, can I just, I've heard some of the negativity as well, and I think some of it is frankly, some of it is, our folks will never win over, but I think a lot of it were people who had kind of bad information with regard to the route that was being proposed. They were, and they'd heard rumor that it was actually going to go into residential neighborhoods. And I think when people see the lines here, that we're coming down Rio Solado in front of the stadium, we're going down Dobson predominantly, commercial areas, areas that are wanting to develop some multifamily that would be, you know, transit-oriented, and then along the Fiesta District, along Southern, you know, again, these are very, more, yeah, there's some residential, but most of it is multifamily that would be very complementary to this, and the majority of it is commercial. So I think, once people see the actual alignment, they'll go, oh, never mind. You know, I heard a rumor it was coming down my, you know, the street that I live on, and that's just, for the most part, not the proposal. Frankie?
I echo some of those comments. Mayor, maybe, Trevor, can you explain the experience that Tempe has had with the current streetcar? I know they have some of the guided lanes or, you know, lanes on the street and their experience on that. And then second, just the expectations of what's happening in Tempe with the NOVUS piece, how many people anticipate to add to that area? Because that, you know, I think the fundamentals of this project, I think we're getting constant validation on, you know, grants that we're receiving, around TOD, this RACE grant, you know, the facts bear that it makes sense to add high-capacity transit to this area, based on the future of what's happening here. So I think that's an important aspect, and I think the mayor alluded to, like, how do we connect these areas of Tempe and West Mesa, that, you know, it's an urban hub that's going to become even further in the future, and we got to be ready to increase the level of options for our residents to, yeah, move in a car. I think that's going to be dominated in the future, but how do we add these other options that create more opportunities for people to move, especially when you noted, you know, currently, almost 80%, 79% have zero- or one-car households in this area, right? That is fact, right? That's basics, like, people need options to move around to our city, and us, as leaders, we need to make sure that we provide those options in the future, and have these discussions, of course, in detail, to provide areas where they can go as far as destinations, right, like our Asian District, our River View, and ultimately Mesa Community College, Banner, the largest, you know, hospital here in the East Valley, and what's happening at the Fiesta Mall into the future. So I think the facts bear that the fundamentals of this type of, of this, the study is there to have success. And we've noted the success with the Neighborhood Buzz. I think those are added complements, that we can continue those discussions of how that buzz, like, in Tempe, how do they use the orbit, can go into neighborhoods after some of this, and add options, even further options, to people move around in this urban environment, this area, right? I don't think streetcar or these light rail systems are not intended for everywhere, right? And I think that's sometimes the public's, like, oh, this is going to be dominated all throughout the city, but it's not intended for everywhere. It doesn't make sense, right, based on resources cost, and then just the density. But in this area, like, it keeps on telling us that we need to add options to this area for people to move in the future, right? So, sorry, it started with those two first questions, but added those comments, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'll start with, yeah, on the NOVUS district, those future phases that I was showing, it's, excuse me, was anticipated to bring additional 4,000 residences just in that area next to Rural Road, 700 hotel rooms, and then 275,000 square feet of retail and entertainment. And then I think your, the first part of your question was, explain kind of how it operates in Tempe right now. It is, it is a mixture of mixed-flow, so as you're working your way around Gammage Curve, you're sharing a lane with personally-owned vehicles, and then there are certainly sections that we operate in exclusive guideway. As we approach downtown Tempe on Mill Avenue, we changed to battery power, still mixed-flow, so we're able to, we're really able to not affect that streetscape. They were very conscientious about the trees that were there and did not want overhead wires on downtown Mill, which is understandable. So, you know, that downtown section, we're able to operate off-wire. So it is a mix throughout that section of downtown Tempe.
And on ridership, what's the experience on ridership on streetcar?
Yeah, ridership has exceeded our expectations. We, there's a lot of reasons, but we've been almost at crush load for certain times of the school season. We're also looking to increase headways here soon. We just received our sixth vehicle, so the project opened two years ago, but we just received our sixth vehicle from that project recently. So that'll enable us to increase those headways and serve it better, but it's been extremely popular. It's exceeded ridership expectations from opening continually.
And what's the time, the headways, as far as timing, is it...
Currently, it's 20-minute headways.
20 minutes, yeah.
And the next step that we're looking to get to is 15-minute headways.
15.
Yeah, and we're serving 80,000 a month.
Let's go forth.
Hi, thank you. So, Jody, you said we extended Route 48 along Rio Solado?
Yes.
And then added service on University and Broadway? And so we've seen a demand for that extension, and...
Yeah, we, well, we added, we added that service to, we extended Route 48 to generate that ridership. So we're seeing that ridership, whenever you add a new route, it takes time to build that ridership, but we're seeing that ridership continue to grow over time.
How long, when was it added?
It was added in October.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's fairly new.
Yeah.
And we, we had an opportunity when Route 40, when Broadway and University, we were able to transition them to being funded by Prop 400, which allowed us to increase service on those routes to match Tempe. So now riders can ride seamlessly between the two cities, and that just helps build the ridership for, when we go and apply for grants, it makes us more competitive for the transit ridership, and it also helps with that bus rail transfer that we have at a lot of our light rail stations.
So talk about, if you could, just briefly, the benefit of light rail or streetcar as opposed to bus service?
I think most, well, light rail or streetcar, the vehicles can carry more people. They don't stop as frequently, but I think one of the biggest benefits when it comes to, like, light rail or streetcar, is having the rail in the ground helps increase and incentivize economic development. So developers are more likely, more interested in building housing or retail or office building around a fixed route system, because they know that transit element is going to be there, where unlike bus, we can change a route in a moment's notice and move that system away. We've seen, when light rail first opened in downtown Phoenix, that's what brought the ASU campus to downtown Phoenix, and that's what encouraged that, all that development that's happening, is because rail and ASU were there. And we're seeing that in downtown Mesa, those same things. ASU, when they came here, when we started having those discussions, light rail was one of the hooks that brought them here. And we've seen the development happening around here. And in Mesa, that development translates into sales tax, which we rely on for our budget. So it is, it's an economic, it's a transit tool, but it's a transit mode, but it's also a very strong economic development mode for the, for the city.
And then, I, and as far as the, I understand, as far as the 79% of zero-to-one-car households in the area, and that's today, and I understand, there's a future for households that may want to be a zero-to-one, but can't. But can you, is that, can you break that out a little bit, Mesa versus Tempe? Have you done that? Have you gotten a little...
I don't have it with me, but we'd be happy to. Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. We'd be happy to provide that.
I'm just curious if that is heavily loaded on the student side on Tempe versus the single-family household side. And again, I'm not making a justification that it isn't necessary, because you certainly, there has to be households in those more than one, zero-to-one cars, that maybe would rather, and at this point can't be, but I'm curious how that breaks down, that 79% Tempe versus Mesa. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any additional questions on this item?
Mayor, I will add, just because I think Councilmember Freeman raised a good question, of course, about the long-term costs, capital cost of this, and one of the reasons why we, this is, every extension is different, right? The flavor of the money, the percentage is different. So Central Mesa extension was different than the Gilbert Road extension. So that's why staff is a little hesitant to give, you know, definite numbers, because that's part of what the next phases of the study and determination, working with MAG and our regional partners, will determine what that flavor of money is. But I just want to assure you, the intent of staff is that it would not have any additional burden percentage-wise than what we've seen on the Central Mesa and Gilbert Road extension. So we're not expecting this to be something that's fully borne or disproportionately borne by the city or the city's general fund in any way, that, we do think that this project would be very competitive for federal grants, and we do it just as we saw in Gilbert Road and Central Mesa. So we're not expecting any disproportionate burden relative to the way we finance other previous extensions in the valley. So I know that might have been as clear as mud, but it's one of those, because of the uncertainty about what the flavor of the money will be, which is typical at this point in the project, it's just hard to give those definitive breakdowns at this point.
I don't want to get into a debate about this, but I do want to point out, there's a lot of attention from the community on the cost of transit and how that impacts our city, but we never talk about the cost of what it takes on a federal and state subsidy to expand and maintain our roads. So it's not a, like, oh, driving a car doesn't cost our city anything, there's a lot of traffic management and public safety. There's a lot of things around car management and those roads, and there are costs for transit also, but you cannot, I don't hate this comparison, transit costs us money, and driving our car and creating congestion and accidents and maintenance and expansions doesn't. I think we have to kind of put a level playing field. Per capita, you're paying less for people on transit than you would if they were in a car, and there's taxes associated with that, so thank you.
So there's a federally-funded study that's ongoing, right, or...
Well, this current study we're doing right now, Tempe and Mesa are paying for ourselves. So in our fiscal year '23 budget, it was, we approved, or the council approved $800,000 for Mesa's share of that study, and Tempe's share is 1.2 million, and that's divided by the percentage of miles you have in your city. So we're in the middle of a $2 million study, and then this 15.9 million that we received in the RACE grant would fund the next two phases of the study, of the project, moving forward.
Okay. All right, Counsel, any other questions on this? Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much. Good update. Uh, item 2B is a presentation and to receive an update on the Mesa Connected Transit Oriented Development Study. Welcome, all in transit this morning, it's good.
Good morning, Mayor, Counsel. I was just going to say that you took the words right from me. So, um, thank you, Mary Kapeski Brown, Planning Director. Rachel Nettles, the Assistant Planning Director, who you all know. And then also with us today is Brett Hanlon, who's one of our principal planners. He's actually the project manager for this study. So we're basically going to build off of a lot of what Jody had just talked about. Um, if we go to the next slide. What we're looking at doing is, this is a project that we received almost a million dollars for from an FTA grant to complete a transit oriented development study. That study is really a policy document. It's a land use study and it's an urban design study. So we're not necessarily look, necessarily looking at the streetcar per se. What we're doing is looking at the land uses that would then support the streetcar, its alignment, and any of the stops that were replaced. So we've got a five mile long land use plan, and you can see the boundaries here. Goes from Sloan Park up on Rio Salada, comes down Dobson, um, captures the Asian District, captures the hospital on Southern, MCC on Southern, the Fiesta redevelopment plan that we are all aware of that is occurring right now on Southern. And then it comes up Country Club Road to Main Street. And so eventually would connect the, the current light rail with the streetcar that would head into Tempe. So that's our study area. It's, um, a mile on either side of that corridor.
Half a mile.
Half mile, half mile radius, so a mile total, um, that little bubble diagram you see around that corridor. So we've, um, created a multidisciplinary team, and we have been working hand in hand with Jody and her consultants. Our consultants has been, have been working really closely together. Um, any of the public outreach we've done, we've done with them. So, uh, the Transit Services Division, we've worked really closely with the Office of Economic Development because there's obviously, as, as Jody pointed out, there's a, a large economic development component of this study. We've been working with the Transportation Team and then with our Downtown Transformation Office. And our consultants include planners, urban designers, architects, mark, um, economists, engineers, uh, so that we make sure we're looking at all of the different aspects of this land use plan and this policy document that will be developed. As we've talked about already this morning and, um, the purpose of the TOD plan is it really helps us to support future grant proposals. So similar to the Raze grant that we have, once this project and these land use policies, this land, this land use plan is put into place, it helps to support when we're applying for federal grants to expand and develop the, the streetcar in this corridor. It also helps to, um, really continue a lot of the Mesa initiatives that are ongoing, such as, such as the infill adaptive reuse, which was one of the council priorities from, from this year's retreat. Uh, business attraction and expansion along this corridor. We want to look at both motorized and non-motorized mobility to give people options. And then it also helps to support the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability in the City. In terms of the timeframe for the project, we started this last September. Um, and as you can see, by, by the time we're done, it'll be in the 2025, 2026 area. And that will be the final zoning that we create as part of this project. So we've gone through our community profile. We've, um, begun our public engagement, again, hand in hand with all of the work that Jody and her team have been doing. Uh, and then over the summer, we're now starting our visioning process. We'll then look at our policy planning, we'll do some marketing and investment analysis, and then we'll finalize and present the plan as we head into the development of our land use regulations. So Rachel and I are going to talk a little bit about the different tasks that have been completed to date. So it's both Task 1 and Task 2, the Community Profile, and then the Public Engagement. And then Rachel will talk a little bit about the next steps. So what does the Community Profile include? We have a very robust demographic and built environment analysis. We've gone out, we've inventoried the site, we've worked with the stats that are coming out of MAG to really look at what is, what are the characteristics of this area? We've looked at the different districts and identity areas along the, the corridor to identify kind of those special features and areas along the corridor that we'll want to capture. Um, in conjunction with the Balanced Housing Plan, we've looked at affordability, then the inventory of affordable housing in this area, the transportation network, some of the micro mobility needs, and then a market analysis. And in that market analysis, we can go to the next slide. What we're, we found are some of the key findings, and we'll just point out some of these key findings. Again, a lot of the source of information for this is that MAG data, the census data, and the analysis that MAG has done for this corridor area. So what we find is that we have a little over 45,000 residents that live within that one mile, half mile either side of the corridor study area. The study area has nearly two times the population density when compared to the rest of the city of Mesa. And I'm sure that that's not necessarily a surprise because we have a lot more higher density housing in that area. So in terms of the, the population density, that's why it's a little bit higher. We also have a potential to grow two times faster in this area. And there's some key reasons for that. We've got the Fiesta Reimagine Project, which is that mixed use project we're looking at at the Fiesta Mall. Um, again, we've got a lot of multifamily housing complexes that are being proposed in this area. So what we look at here, again, based on that MAG data, is that both our population and our dwelling unit growth rate is about two times faster than the rest of the city in terms of the density. We also find that the residents in this area are younger than Mesa's general population. So it's 30 years versus 37 years old. The averaging household income is 36% lower than Mesa as a whole. It's 42,000 versus a 65. Again, this might be in part because of the younger population in this area. And that fewer than 1% of the residents both live and work in the study area. We have over 1,000 businesses in the study area today, and they employ nearly 25,000 people. And that we, we see that and project that the corridor could add over 1,000 jobs a year so that by 2060, we'll have about 66,000 jobs in this area. We also know that our consumer services, such as healthcare and retail, they account for about 51% of the businesses in the study area and the employment opportunities. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to talk a little bit about some of the public engagement and our next steps.
All right, thank you, Mary. So, uh, Counsel, we're, we've kicked off public engagement in February of this last year, and that began with the creation of a public participation plan. And since then, we have been engaging in public outreach and engagement activities. Um, and this includes talking with business owners in the area about construction mitigation and some of the impacts that this might have on, on their properties. And the culmination of this public engagement effort will be a report and a summary at the, the end of the actual kind of planning period when we come out with our final planning reports. But some of the public outreach that's in, that's happened today, this is a task that's, even though we've started and it's, you know, included as one task, it's going to be occurring throughout the whole planning process. We're going to be engaging the public throughout the process. Um, so today, we've had four community outreach meetings, we've had four POP of events, we've had four meetings that, with focus group meetings with developers and builders. And then we have a online survey that's out, which we received about 250 responses to date. And what we've been hearing from stakeholders so far, a couple of key factors. As one is that they're really looking for improved safety and increased shade in the area. They think that would have the most benefit for the West Mesa. As far as transportation and mobility options, we see that 71% of people want the convenience of walking, biking to nearby restaurants and shopping centers. Um, 60% of people wish that they could get around West Mesa without having to worry about parking. So having transit and not need to have a car and actually worry about, you know, finding parking in the area would really benefit these, these folks. And then, um, finally, there's a greatest desire that's been expressed by the public is for parks, public spaces, sit-down restaurants, and grocery stores. So as we're kind of wrapping up, um, this section of the task, we've really started working on our visioning right tech, right now, which is Task 3. And this includes creating a vision for the corridor and creating station area typologies. And I want to kind of unpack what this is a little bit for you. So as Jody was mentioning in her presentation, it's anticipated that the, the streetcar would have stops every quarter to a half mile. So we're seeing, we're anticipating there would be around 11 stops in the study area. But as we know, you know, for the most part, we want to try to connect major activity centers. But we also have to, you know, we have to address the spacing of those stops as well. So there's the, you know, the potential that some of these stops are going to be located in more of a residential type of, um, settings compared to activity areas. So what these typologies do is it creates different sort of scenarios and characteristics for different stop types. So one being a residential type of setting versus an activity type of setting. And what we look at then is then what kind of density and what type of uses are appropriate for those surrounding areas within those kind of stop and those, um, activity nodes. Um, and then based on that, what we do is then we take a deeper dive, and we're looking at the, we're creating station area plans for those anticipated stops. And what we do within those is we're making some, we're creating visualizations and concept plans for the areas directly surrounding the stop. So once again, looking at the types of uses that would be proposed there, looking at the densities that you would likely want to see there, and then making recommendations about active transportation connectivity into the surrounding areas, about how to create that first and last mile connection there. And then, um, finally, the station area plans, look at opportunities for phasing and as far as the improvements that happen there. Um, so those kind of get piled into a snapshot for each one of these station areas that really serves as a, as a blueprint for the future. So after we complete that visioning, um, the portion, that task, we move on to Task 4, which is our policy plans. And it starts off with a regulatory approach memo. Or our consultants are going to provide us some different options for different types of policies and, um, land use kind of tools that we might be able to use to, to, um, to try to accomplish the sort of vision we want to see in these areas. So those could be a form-based code, those could be an overlay code. Um, but what they'll do after providing that approach memo to the staff and working with staff to kind of identify the preferred outcome is, um, they would work on creating a TOD overlay and text amendment recommendations for, for the city, as well as design guidelines and standards for various, um, different areas within the city. So you might see, we have now, we have the Fiesta District Design Guidelines. So looking at updating those, looking at creating design guidelines for the, the, um, the Asian District area, the Riverview area. So those are the type of outcomes that would come out of that. Um, they also would give us a, um, implementation memo and policy toolkit. So looking at, um, different policy recommendations that we can include in addition to, um, the land use aspect of it as far as business attraction and incentives there. And then finally, we would have some GIS modeling that goes along with this. We'd be able to visualize the type of densities that we would be anticipating along this line and within those study areas. And then with Task 5 is financing and investment strategies. So this is where we start looking at the different grants that we might be able to apply for to try to, to try to effectuate some of these outcomes. Um, this also includes a market forecast and a marketing plan. So just as we did with the existing conditions, there was a, a market forecast or a market, um, snapshot that was done at the time where it really looked at the, the individual station areas and looked at the demographics and the employment data within those areas to try to, to identify, um, kind of the readiness of those stations and what triggers would need to, um, come into place before they were ready to really develop at full buildout. So this does a forecast into the future where they would anticipate that based on some of the economic projections and, um, uh, demographic projections in the area. But then they would also give us that toolkit, the analysis for us to be able to do as a city on our own. So as time goes on, we can really evaluate those, those station areas over time to decide when we want to prioritize, prioritize some type of investment in the station area based on the readiness. And then finally, Task 6, we come to our final plan and the presentation of our recommendations for City Council. So it'd be the delivery of the plan and then a, a final presentation of the plan and associated documents, both to the Planning and Zoning Board and to the City Council. And just to recap where we are at with this project, as Mary was mentioning, we have done the, the Community Profile, which is that existing conditions report. And we have started the public engagement, which included that public engagement plan. Where we're at right now is really in that visioning step where we're looking at around the station areas, what that might look like and creating those, those concept plans. Um, but this will continue on through the rest of the year. We're anticipating that the project will wrap up in the winter of 2024, 2025. And then after that, that's when we would really be taking those recommendations forward and creating some text amendments and doing some policy recommendations to City Council. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank, thank you very much. Counsel, questions? Ms. Duff?
I'll just make a comment. Thank you very much for a great presentation and giving overview. And I'm very excited about the anticipation of the development of this area. We've seen in downtown Mesa, um, before, we had light rail, before we had transit oriented development. And today, a billion dollars of investment, sales tax activity is very high. Um, when you look at the revenues that it produces for operating our city, I think this is just another opportunity to expand the revenue base, to create options for living, um, car optional living, and have a huge amenity of services and entertainment and restaurants and everything than we do today. Um, I, I think it's looking into the future. I know it takes a while to get there, but I'm excited about that future. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
This sounds like a lot of work, doing all this. And, and as I looked at the streetcar near TOD assessment and the lines you drove around, or drew around the, uh, district here, looks like it's like a mile wide, uh, right? I mean, either, half a mile either way of the streetcar. And, and then there's some gaps in there. So I'm looking, how do we infill or collect the people in the gap areas? So that might be part of the conversation in the future. I, I see a lot of, uh, good outcome on this as far as the location of the streetcar and how it's going to access to multi-density as well as employers and education. And obviously, uh, we have a hospital there as well. So I look forward to more about this and learning more, and, and it's a work in progress. And thank you.
Frankie?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I think this builds nicely on the prior, previous, uh, presentation. Uh, when, when you look at all the amenities in, in Tempe that we would love to connect to at Sun Devil Stadium and everything, that all that Novus is going to be and Riverview. And then you start looking at all the landmarks along the proposed route between Sloan and Riverview and the Asian District and the largest hospital in the state, the largest community college in the state. I mean, it just, it makes sense to have transit now with just those existing assets. But then when you add this wrinkle to it, which is, uh, the, the tremendous leverage we get when we, when we have public investment, how that attracts all of that transit oriented development that we've seen along Apache Boulevard and Main Street and then throughout, uh, the existing light rail corridor. Uh, it's just very exciting. So, uh, this is a big part of explaining to people who come to this with some skepticism what the merits are. And when you look at who the demographics are of West Mesa, you see that that's a population that really is, uh, would benefit tremendously from transit. So I look forward to getting, hearing more about this.
So I guess just for clarity, that what we just talked about in the previous presentation goes to Maine, Dobson to Maine. So, but our study area also overlaps that part as well? The past Sloan and Riverview and everything? So, I mean, where's, where is this connecting and overlapping? Are we just looking at the Maine down to Southern and back to Maine route then? Because that other one's covering that area, or is this totally different?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsberry, so this was identified as a preferred route back, I think it was 2015. So this is the ultimate buildout of what the streetcar would be connecting all the way back to Main Street, um, off of Country Club. Um, as far as the, the previous study that they're doing, there, it's phased. So they're looking at the first phase of this, which would be down Rio Salado, connecting with, um, Dobson right there is for, for their analysis that they're doing.
But do we have an overlapping area, I guess is what I'm asking.
That area, so, uh, right there at Dobson, at the top of the, at the top of the figure where you can see, that's where it connects, that's where it starts overlapping. Um, and then ultimately, it follows the ultimate buildout of that, that streetcar alignment.
So I guess I'm wondering, are we spending money on the same exact area on two different studies?
Councilmember Spillsberry, if I can, this is a different type of study. This is a land use study. What Jody presented earlier is about the actual engineering of the streetcar on the street. This is how the land use ties into that streetcar that she's studying. So we're not dup- So we're not duplicating efforts. This will be the land use plan for the ultimate corridor, the corridor Jody talked about earlier. Eventually, the ultimate corridor will extend all the way back up to Main Street. So we're trying to lay out the land use plan now for that streetcar.
Okay, that's helpful. So when she talked about, you know, the decisions, local decisions of what exactly that would look like, whatever's decided there would potentially be the exact same type of layout or streetcar type configuration that we would continue? Would it be the same?
I might ask Jody to come up and talk about that future phase.
I just, as I was reviewing these two last night, I was trying to figure out where they, what the difference of them are and how they overlap.
So Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, are you talking, when you talk configuration, are you talking like center alignment, sideline running?
Yes.
Because I think each, each phase could be unique.
Okay.
And so as...
Wouldn't be the same all the way through?
It wouldn't, no. Because we're actually looking, I mean, the existing project could have different, parts of it could be center running, parts of it could be side running, depending on what that is. So as we were to progress the next phase, we would look at what, what would work for that environment we have in. What this study really does is it gives us a benefit in two areas. One, when we go and apply, as in one of the slides they had, when we go and apply for a federal grant, land use is one of the rating criteria. So by already having a plan in place for this, it makes us much more competitive for that funding. So we're really leveraging this grant for hundred, tens of millions of dollars down the road. The other thing it does is by planning now, it helps us be able to look to accommodate, maybe get some dedicated right, right away now as development comes in, so we're not having to have to buy real estate future, for future projects. So those are some of the, two of the biggest benefits I see of doing this land use study now for future planning.
So one of the reasons we even got that $15.9 million grant was probably because we already had this in place.
It probably could have been one of the reasons. I think that, but not the only reason, because Tempe is also a big part of that grant as well. I think what getting the RACE grant shows us on top of this grant is that this area, this, this part of West Mesa is very competitive for those federal grant opportunities. We meet a lot of the good criteria to be able to expand it, where it might, some areas it might be more difficult to.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, council, any additional discussion on this item? All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item 2C is to, I'm sorry, yes, item 2C is to take action on appointments to various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item 3 on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of a board meeting and roundtable minutes. Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, for making a motion to approve that, and Mr. Freeman, first of the second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Duff?
A couple of items is, some of us, I think, Councilmember Freeman and I, I think, no, and I swear heredity because you read the proclamation, the Juneteenth celebration that was held at MCC. It was a city event as well as other entities coming together for the celebration. It was the first of its kind. It was well-attended and very well-done. I really loved it and look forward to seeing it again next year. And I attended a fundraiser at the Mesa Contemporary Arts Museum here at the Mesa Art Center for an exhibition called Materializing Mormonism. And the art in there is phenomenal. I should have looked up how long the, it's going on until maybe early August or something like, there's only a few weeks left to see the art. It's incredible, and I encourage everybody to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms., go forth.
I just mentioned there is a, an event today at Falcon Field, an ice cream social on this hot day. All-American Ice Cream Social, red, white, and cool. Today from 2:00 to 3:30 at Falcon Field. So if you are around that area, please join us.
Thank you. I apologize for missing some events here in the last week. I have been traveling. I went to the annual U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting where I was able to chair the Immigration Task Force meetings. Also spoke at a session on our Visit Mesa Autism Program that was very well-received. And then went from that meeting to the Aspen IDIS Festival in Aspen, Colorado, for the last few days, where I spoke again on our Visit Mesa Autism Program. And again, that was very well-received, again, on a, on a national stage, and I think we'll continue to get some, some good pats on the back for, so a shout-out to Visit Mesa for initiating that program, but again, something that we were, a story I was proud to share about our, our community. Mr. Breitler, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Well, Mayor will be back on Monday night for a study session and then council meeting. I just want to make note for council, since, because of the July 4th holiday, we will not have study session next Thursday, but at this coming Monday, July 1st, study session, we'll review the agenda for the July 8th meeting. So just be prepared, we'll of course review the July 1st agenda one last time before the meeting that evening, but we'll have the July 8th agenda for your review. But because it's early, all of the backup material, most of the backup material will be available to you later today, but there may be a few items that still, staff is finishing up some of the presentations, and we'll get that to council just as quickly as possible. So just wanted to make note of that on Monday. And besides ending the day with us on Monday, you can start the day with us as well. At 8:00 a.m., we'll have the police property building ribbon-cutting. So that's great, a great new facility to help our public safety on July 1st at 8:00 a.m. And then of course, as just mentioned, July 4th next week with our Celebration of Freedom, we want to encourage everyone to come to downtown Mesa and help us celebrate the 4th at 6 o'clock at the Convention Center on July the 4th. So, thank you, Mayor.
And, and there's a lot of events on the 4th of July, but I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll remind people that we are having a naturalization ceremony inside the Convention Center that afternoon. I think it starts about 5 o'clock, in case he's nodding her head, right? If you have not, I mean, that's one of the most patriotic thing that I've ever participated in. So I would encourage anyone who wants to get a, have a patriotic experience on the 4th of July to, to come down a little early to the fireworks display and, and sit in on that. You'll see hundreds of, of new Americans swear in allegiance and hear from some great speakers, and it's just a very, very patriotic experience. This meeting is not over. Item, item 6 on our agenda is to convene an executive session regarding two lawsuits, the Hutchinson and Perrington lawsuits. Is there a motion to go into an executive session? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we'll now go into an executive session.